All right, I'm glad to call this meeting to order. First item, we need to make a motion to approve Joey and Kathy as the co-secretists.
Can we make it out for longer than one meeting?
Let's just stick with one meeting right now.
All right.
I know what you're saying.
Because it's something they might be thinking about.
It's fine, I'll just check it, it'd be easier. Martin made the motion, I seconded it.
All right, Lori?
Yes.
Chappie?
Yes.
Eric?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes.
Martin?
Yep.
All right, now I understand the motion, so we'll preview agenda. Second.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, three point one.
First of all, thank you for coming in on Saturday morning, I appreciate it. Hopefully this will help get some direction and also understanding going into particularly the March 14th meeting and even the March 28th meeting. Want to try to get a clearer picture as we're moving forward because currently the goal is a balanced budget, 16-17, okay? And you'll see here this morning some presentations in regards to job category reductions and some other items I'll hand out here in just a second. And then also trying to determine where you want to go with the teacher salary schedule. And that is the main focus of today because really, we have turned our attention to getting the teacher salary schedule proposal and any changes recommended here today so we can get teacher contracts out, okay? By March 28th is where I'm looking to have that done where you'll vote on all teacher contracts so we can make the April 15th deadline. When you have your largest, 70, 80% of your budget as personnel, it's awful hard to make any type of reductions and get to a balanced budget without making reductions in personnel, okay? We made a presentation on the 22nd on the 12-month calendar and reduction of days. You as a board did not want to go there, okay? You're going to see this morning a reduction in days of job group categories. It's similar, but again, it's what we believe is a more balanced approach to these job categories, okay, without affecting education. Some other reductions that we have listed here I think are more of, no other term to use, no brainers. And then I have a skeleton of a plan that I term Saint Joe's School District All-In that I want to briefly go over with you as well. Because all this ties together on the direction we want to go forward with. And I think by the end of the meeting, hopefully you'll see this. So what I'm showing you here today is the beginning of a skeleton, of an outline of what eventually by the end of the meeting will be laid out, particularly in more detail, the teacher salary schedule. But if we're going to get to a balanced budget, one of the proposals is a reduction of days worked as presented by group categories, that'll be presented today. I'm meeting with curriculum coordinators again on Monday to finalize the curriculum coordinator plan reduction. I do not believe that you can completely eliminate the curriculum coordinator positions due to the fact, I look at the resources you go into purchasing curriculum, okay? And for instance, you've seen a science curriculum proposal that's approximately 1.2 million if it was implemented in full, that is budgeted this current year, okay? And you'll have to make a determination on that. We're of the opinion to go ahead and make that purchase. Any future purchases though, for 16-17, might have to be delayed or postponed if the balanced budget goal is there, which it currently is. And we'll have that planned to you on March 14th. On March 14th, we'll also be asking for a surplus property sale of 10 vehicles off the maintenance fleet. Also, I'll be asking, I've got to get this a little bit more finalized with Chris, a complete reduction or elimination of 50% of part-time summer help depending on need. We also will be looking for a surplus property sale for tech and furniture, complete elimination of the district cellphone plan. We'll be asking for an RFP on workman comp and property liability because we believe that we can have some savings there on redoing a contract and hopefully getting a better price in those two areas. Insurance across the board. We talked about 15 million in health insurance costs, property liability. Wes, what's the cost there on our property liability?
That was $380,000.
There's savings there that can be made just by keeping vendors competitive. The other piece is also eliminating $250 supply amount per staff member that was given last spring. Now, it's our understanding that was a one-time decision by the board.
That is correct.
So as Wes is putting this budget together, that's got to be a decision made, okay? The other piece to this now only ties into academics, but also increasing revenue. And it's what I'm terming Saint Joe's School District All-In Plan. It's 90-90 goal, all-in on attendance. We laying some things out in the next three months as we move into the 16-17 school year for the goal to have 90-90, 90% of the students attending 90% of the time, which could generate an additional 1.5 million minimally. Now, that also is dependent upon what ends up by the state legislature and the other variables of the foundation formula, okay? With that, we're looking to also have a high school semester test incentive tied to attendance. It's not that we're letting kids out of school, but it will be tied to either the semester test helping you, but not hurting you if you meet a certain percentage amount of goal or number of days, three days or less, for instance. The semester test could only help you, but not hurt you. That's the idea behind it.
It's a litmus test, not an actual test, correct?
The semester test?
Yeah.
It is a per-class, my understanding cumulative test of the semester.
Okay, so it's an actual test.
Correct.
So it's in addition to the test they already gave?
They are currently taking semester tests, okay? We want to tie in attendance with it to where they're still taking the test, but it can only help them, but not hurt them if they meet the attendance requirement.
So is this similar to the once upon a time where you didn't have to take the test?
Similar, but they actually were let out of school for it. You cannot do that legally by DSE state standards.
Well, so you'd still, you're saying that you'd still take it, it just wouldn't hurt your grade?
Correct.
It's a sweet deal.
So you'd still take the test.
Middle school retention policy needs to be reviewed and if anything may be enforced better in regards to promotion and moving on to ninth grade. We want to review graduation change for the 2017-18 school year. Anything you would do and any type of graduation requirement change would have to be grandfathered in and probably staged in over the next three years. This probably would entail a differentiated diploma plan. Currently, you have 32 credits possible to take in four years with an eight block, four periods a day. You have potentially eight credits a year you could obtain for 32 credits total. We still maintain the same percentage requirement that was under the old seven-period day at 25. You didn't increase that percentage when you went into an eight-period day. Minimally, I believe it needs to be 28. A differentiated diploma could be where you have a 28, 30, and 32 and some type of gold, silver, and bronze category. North Kansas City has done this, there's many other districts that have done this, okay? It helps increase expectations for students, okay? And keeps them in school. Currently, right now, they know it, they can theoretically blow off seven credits and still graduate. Also, a goal-
Which is almost a year.
Correct. Also, a goal would be, it would be awful difficult to have this for this summer, but for summer 17, summer school, to have a net 10% profit, okay? Now, that is dependent upon whatever cost, number of students, those types of things figured in, also the foundation formula, but it can be done, a net 10%, okay? Currently, right now, we run either even or in the red on it, okay? The open enrollment policy, I talked to Dennis predominantly on this, sorry to bring you out bud, but we need to have the open enrollment policy reviewed. We need to have the block schedule reviewed and recommending any changes for 17-18. If the block scheduling with the current way and structure that it is does not utilize staff to its best efficiency. We basically, even though we went to eight periods, you're still only teaching six of eight classes. It's the same as it was when you were teaching seven-period days. You want to create opportunities for kids, you want to give more course offerings, you've got to increase the ability of staff to either go to seven of eight or to 10-block even, eight of 10, and where those classes are meeting more on a consistent basis instead of every other day, or at least they're meeting, there's other options to look at. So it's meeting all needs of kids, okay? And I don't know if that block scheduling does. I think it really helps your upper-end kids, but your marginal kids and that every other day standpoint, they need the consistency behind it, so that's why I'm recommending that review.
Just for the record, there are studies all over the planet that show that block scheduling is actually a detriment to children's education in middle school and high school compared to traditional eight-period days, the seven, eight-period structure, so.
No matter what you look at, I do believe it's a consistency standpoint that gets you where you need to go in many aspects.
Well, and the attention span of teenage years aren't 90 minutes anyway.
The other piece to this that you're going to see today particularly is the K6 DESI standard size to student classrooms. I'm going to hand out the DESI process standards that you can refer to when that piece comes. But if we want to make the Saint Joe's School District a world-class school district, we've got to get our teacher-student ratios in all classes, particularly at the elementary, to desirable standards. What you'll see today is a step to get to the minimum standards. That's why you added Paris to the classrooms, okay? We believe, let's take the next step and break it down and add teachers, okay? And you'll see those numbers today.
One comment I might add that if you do get to eliminated, well, no block scheduling, that actually frees up staff to cover some of these student-teacher ratio deficiencies that you have provided in space or have to add modular classrooms to do it, so.
That is correct, but also understand that it's predominantly at the high school level with different certification requirements. With that in mind, I'm going to turn it over to Amy in regards to the job group position reduction plan.
You have some information that's been presented to you with regard to some potential reductions that we could make with an estimated savings of-
Do you have that handout?
I don't, it's posted.
Can we make copies? They don't have their computers.
Oh, I didn't even think about that. Yeah, we'll have to make copies. So I'll just talk to it a little bit until you get your copies. What we have is some proposals that will save an estimated $488,000. These are through reductions in some work calendar days and then also some reduction in positions and/or status. And what I mean by that is full-time to part-time status. So what I've done is meet with each of the directors that oversee the various areas to come up with some ideas on where some of these solutions potentially could be made. And so what you see is kind of the accumulation of what we've put together and some cost reductions. So as you look through that, I may refer to Denise because Denise's area has several areas of reduction. Any of the individuals or positions that we're talking about, we did have conversations this week with as well, just to notify them that there would be a proposal, we didn't want them to hear it at the work session.
Can I interrupt just for a quick second? This is what was presented in-
Your session?
Well, correct.
It's going to be.
It's changed.
Well, I know. It was presented in whole cumulative totals in the regular session on the 22nd. However, we had to back off that amount because approximately $280,000, $300,000 was through early childhood special education, where we receive 100% total reimbursement for. So it was silly to not, and those predominantly were with one group category. So that had to be taken out of that, that's why this number is now the-
$488,000.
$488,000, okay?
I have one question before she goes through this, and this is a question for Denise. Looks like all of this is from your area. These changes, I take it since you've presented them, would not impact special ed education whatsoever, correct?
I believe we'll maintain the same level of service directly to the students, yes.
Okay, that's important, thank you.
One of the areas that again is one of your highest budget areas is special education and the maintenance of effort federal standard that you have to maintain. And I've talked with Denise many times in regards to this of trying to just get a better handle in controlling, because it can get aligned. We still want to meet the needs of kids, okay? That is not going away.
So as we look at, we'll talk about the work calendar reduction. So as we look at the work calendar reductions, some of these are taking positions back from a full teacher schedule to just student days only. And so again, none of the work calendar reductions will affect actual student days in any of these areas, the days that they're here. So the services that we provide will still be available on those days. So what you have is several areas, do you want me to go down each one or?
Do they have that in front of them now?
No.
Oh, they're Chris, so good. What's in it out here?
It's actually present with salaries of these-
This would be a salary reduction based on work calendar days.
Maybe I put it off.
So their daily rates would be calculated-
It is on the computer.
Martin, when we were taking a look at this, Martin, comparatively, actually, we were looking at this back when I did Mark, we were here back in November, December, and it is more days comparatively speaking to what a lot of other school districts have, like Paris, for instance, just have Paris work-student days. The whole idea originally behind it, Martin, was to bring the days back and to increase wages. Now, if that's still a goal of the district, I think we need to get there with it because the idea behind it would be to minimize the days where it's more efficient, increase their wages on a per-hour basis, and then their actual daily rate is better, or they could end up making more in the long term. Now, that's the whole issue here. Are we looking for a balanced budget for 16-17, or are we looking to increase wages? Now, I don't want to get this off track, Amy, but that was the original goal.
The intent of the balanced budget decree, at least in my view from the board, is to make sure that the district vets all these issues and reduces all these areas where there's excess, or at least takes an attempt at it. That was the intent, is to force you down that path to do exactly what you're doing here. Whether we agree to take some of the stuff out or not, that's dependent upon the group, but that was the intent, to force that to happen, because there's plenty of excess in the district still that does not impact children's education. So basically draw a line and stand and tell you to go do your homework.
Well, I think also we have to take consideration that we don't have to cut. So what Eric is saying is true, we need to vet it all out, see what's necessary and what's not. Because, you know, as you go through the years, you add stuff, but you don't take stuff out. And so you run into the issue of what's still really needed and what's not. So that's where we are, I think we ought to be now, is determining what's really needed and what's not. But in making those decisions, I think as a group, we need to also make sure we have input, as much input as we can garner to make the right decision.
And what I believe you're trying to get to, and I believe is a great goal, is to get this excess, get back to the base, the base being the standard classroom sizes, make sure we got that covered. Then if you can afford the extras-
The Starbucks.
You start to add those, you know, to make your education get to the desirable level even, and that-
More importantly, when you do that, you're going to get the public support for all the stuff we need going forward to grow the district inclusive of new schools, new everything. You've got to show the public you've done your homework, and this is doing that. You're doing your homework, and I agree 100% with my friend Martin down here on the end, with one caveat, that we've got to do what's in the best interest of the city and the district as a whole, and we can't succumb to pressures to win a popularity contest with district employees in that process. So, and that's a difficult line when you're receiving pressure from all constituents around within the district and outside the district. So our job as a board is to provide oversight.
Exactly. And also, I think that we need to keep in mind that there are things going on in our district that are cutting edge. They have, we've always been a cutting-edge district. We've done things here because they were good for kids, and we know that they are and they are effective. Whereas there are other districts, I can, and I go back to my State House days where there were legislators that were trying to mandate things for districts to do, we were already doing.
But our outcomes aren't there, Martin.
So I'm just saying, we just need to make sure now that we vet this process and that we don't take away the cutting edge that we had. I want to get to the basics, I understand the basics, but let's make sure that we, you know, make the right decisions and we got to vet this stuff right.
And Martin, I agree 100%. And this is important for a lot of reasons. I mean, they're difficult decisions and we'll get through the rest of this discussion here in a few minutes, I'm sure, but if we can reduce some of these excesses, and this is a very good proposal by Denise, so I have to compliment you, you've done your homework. If we can get through some of these and make some of these reductions of some of these excesses, then it gives us the ability to reallocate that money and put it where it's better used in the district. For example, these teacher salaries that we're going to get to talk about here in a few minutes, because to fix that, you're talking about an excess of $3 million. And so we cut a million and a half out last Monday, she's giving us another half a million right there. After we cut the million and a half, just to get us to where we get to close to a balanced budget, we need to come up with $3 million bucks. There's a half a million sitting on the sheet right there, and that $3 million is going to actually pay for these teacher increases. So just keep that in mind.
We have more than just teachers, though.
I know, the whole thing is teachers, Paris.
All of it, okay. And I have one thing I want to tag on to Martin, and I didn't mean to interrupt then, I'm sorry, Martin, for doing that.
It's conversation.
Because we're all passionate about wanting to do the right thing, and we're on the same page with that, but it is very complicated. You know, going forward, cutting edge or not, we have to show outcomes. I mean, to say that we have programs that are cutting edge, but there's not the outcomes with it, that doesn't help our students, it doesn't help anyone. So we need to make sure that the programs that we are keeping have the outcomes desired for our students.
I agree with you.
I know maybe it hasn't been as good of an assessment of that in the past, so going forward-
And so along that same line, just last comment, what we need to do as a board in the district is, we need to evaluate all the programs that we have on a consistent basis, instead of waiting until we're at an impasse here where we got to cut something and now we got down with everybody's struggling trying to, with Sado, trying to decide what they want to give up and what they don't.
One of the first things we did, Martin, was implement the program review plan, if you recall, back last fall. It's in place now.
This has been being looked at, people know this is coming for more than a year. So to say we're rushing into this, that means people just sat there with blinders on thinking they didn't have to change anything. I called baloney.
So I think the board, we need to push this, push that review like every three years or something, you know?
Well, the program review is on a-
Annual?
Kendra, help me here.
It's annual, isn't it, Kendra?
The program review addresses very-
Is it annual?
Some of the programs are annual and some are biannual, some are heavy. We have so many programs that until we kind of get it in place, there's even some that are out for four years. But I think that as we go through, we can improve that. Every year, we put the program evaluation kind of on the table to be evaluated in and of itself. So right now, a lot of them are annual. So for example, we're going to look at ID and Project Leadway coming up on March 14th. We're going to look at Business Services coming up on, you know, in April, in federal programs, so those bigger programs are annual.
As long as we have a consistent review, I think we'll be in better shape to where we won't have, run into this issue.
And Martin, that is a very good point, excellent point, because I believe that program review, policy, procedure, and process, it's something many school districts and boards of educations failed to keep in place. And I've stressed to these directors that, I think at the time, I've stressed to you as a board, do not let that piece go away.
Agreed. I'm sorry, Miss Amy, go right ahead.
See what you stirred up? See what you stirred up?
Okay, so as we look through these, the recommendations, the first page that you have there are the work calendar day reductions. I'm not sure if you will go through each one of these to discuss or?
Can I ask about the top on the ROTC one? Isn't that salary paid also by the Army?
There is funding-
A portion of it.
A portion of it, but there are, right currently, quite a bit of district funds, local funds that are owing to pay.
Okay, I wasn't aware how much, I didn't know if it was half, half, or, okay.
Which one is that?
ROTC.
ROTC.
Because I remember there was a presentation one time that they were paid by the Army too, so, okay. Thank you.
All right, so as we look down, we would be looking at reducing, there are some of these on a 260-day calendar, a 12-month calendar that would be reduced. these on a two-hundred-and-sixty-day calendar, a twelve-month calendar that would be reduced. There are several that are currently on a teacher calendar. And the teacher calendar are student days plus additional days at the beginning and end of the year, and professional development during the year. There are some individuals or some positions that we feel can be reduced from a teacher calendar, but still allow for some of the professional development during the calendar year, but don't necessarily have to be there during the entire time the teachers are there. And so you'll see those outlined as well. Along with some additional positions that are listed there that do go beyond a teacher calendar, those positions are some of the process consultants. Denise, do you want to talk to the process that they go through at the beginning, end of the year? Okay.
Process consultants, tell me what that is.
These special education process consultants are your faculty within the special education department that oversee the parent and teacher referrals of students for consideration of special education services. So they administer assessments, either cognitive assessments, behavioral rating scales, adaptive skills, and the like. They guide the team towards eligibility, and it's their responsibility to ensure that the, all those steps leading up to it are in compliance. There's very non-negotiable timelines with the federal government, some as short as a five-day turnaround to as long as a sixty-day turnaround. And then they're responsible for the final write-up of the educational evaluation report. All those documents are always, would be part of any type of litigation or complaint. So it's important that they be in compliance. And then they also become a part of that child's educational record permanently. So this group of faculty are very important to keeping us in compliance and meeting the requirements of child find that any child that is suspected of a disability is appropriately referred in place.
This change is recommended to take, well, five days in the summertime. What's like they're on teacher calendars currently plus twenty days, and you're recommending taking five days of the summer piece out of it, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Say it again.
No, they're on the teacher calendar, and then they have twenty extra days in comp to do assessments outside of the school year. And she's recommending we take five of those days back, so they still have fifteen days outside of the school year to complete the job. So basically, it's a reduction of two and a half percent of day, total days to do their job. That's what you're recommending, right?
Yes.
How many teachers is it?
Ten.
Some of the consultants on it.
There are ten, and three are fully funded. So your savings comes from-
Seven.
The seven that are funded by local funds.
There's nineteen-hundred-and-twenty-four special ed students, so it's roughly, you know, one-hundred-and-ninety-four, two-hundred kids that each individual is dealing with.
And every part of their work too, which I didn't say earlier, is every child with an IEP must have a three-year annual review. So not only are we doing the incoming and the exiting on the transition side, but also every child should have some type of triennial review.
So the process consultants do the review?
Yes, they were, once a request for consideration comes in, it is a responsibility to facilitate the process of gathering all the information to see if assessment is warranted. So there are, they are your frontline special education people. Just ask the teacher who's providing the instruction, then your process consultants are that group that's guiding your compliance piece.
So what is, I know that a lot of us have had a hard time understanding the particular position. What does a day look like, just sort of generally for them? Do they go to multiple buildings?
They are all assigned to multiple buildings. Their usual day probably is going to have some time with the principal and special education teachers. They are meeting with parents, they're often the person leading and guiding those meetings with the parents. They will do classroom observations, they will do cognitive, that's your intelligent testing.
Kids can be referred at any point in time, basically, throughout the year. You know, as teachers are evaluating, parents are evaluating their own kids, new kids come into the district, kids leave the district.
Yes, but they do more, it sounds like, than just get them in the program initially. They are maintaining things.
Maintaining, meeting.
So they have to check up, do they part of the IEPs?
Yeah.
Yes, they do a regular review.
Oh yeah, the IEPs, you go over those with the parents and teachers and stuff.
As a federal program, we have to do a self-monitoring every three years. We're in cohort two, which means we're with about quarter of the state's districts, you do a self-assessment. So we, there's no time to rest on your laurels and compliance, because about the time you finish up one federal self-monitoring report, then they are coming back around for you to-
And I will commend Denise and her staff. I don't know if you recall that period when here last fall, where we got the compliance report back. And it was an excellent report from Desi. It's one area, the vaulty areas, that it is pretty good.
So those guys are doing their job.
So what are they doing on those other fifteen or twenty days?
Those are very busy days on the front end. What's important to us to provide, our department strongly believes in strong customer service, and our children are our customers and their parents. So when families move to St. Joe over the summer, the first thing they do if they have a child with special needs is to call me and find out, how are you going to help me take care of my child? So to do that, we have to request records from the sending school, they have to be thoroughly reviewed. And you are obligated as a district to provide comparable services. So if we don't have comparable services already available, we would need to be getting those prepared, because you must provide services on the first day of school. So we need them to be making those calls, tracking down any assistive technology equipment, talking to me about staffing needs or professional development needs. So that all takes place on the front end. The back end are, are just going to be wrapping up all those evaluations, so that we can try and have them finished and ready to start on the first day of school in August. So there's lots of front work, and then cleanup work on the end.
So if you're cutting five days off a ten-people's calendar, does that mean that your office is going to have to pick up some extra?
They will have to consolidate their work. They understand their exempt employees, and they will work until their, they'll work until their work is finished.
It'd be basically like three days on the start of school, two days on the backside of school?
We haven't decided yet. We're going to, I believe in shared decision-making. We're going to wait for your final decision, and then together we'll decide how we can best serve the district.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Denise has done a tremendous job with this night. She's been a trooper with it, I do commend you on that.
So can I, let me ask you, what is our staff, what was your staff members, how did they react to the reduction?
The reduction, their first concern was meeting the needs at the building level. We are here, Special Services is a support department. We're here to support students, we're here to support staff. So their first concern was really was, is it going to impact supporting our buildings, teachers and principals, and how's it going to impact us? Then honestly, next was the district. Their greatest concern really is at the building level, taking care of the kids first, and then the district compliance piece.
And so if we take five days, is it five days, five days, four days? And so you split three to two, so you're actually just talking about missing two days more, beginning and three days at the end. And those three days, those five days, that work can be done in the five days that we're still working on.
We're going to get our, we're going to get the work done. It's going to be more challenging. They were, of course, they're disappointed, and it wasn't about the reduction of pay. It really was focused on, how are we going to continue to get our work done at the level of their director's expectation and the level of parents and communities' expectations?
Martin, this is, your question is a very good question, but I will say that in any organization, these type of decisions forces people to really look at how they do things. And as a team, if you involve them the way she's done, as a team, they figure out how to do things better and more efficiently and cover that. And that's why there's recommendation coming from her and that group instead of from the board makes a lot of sense, because she's evaluated this within her group, and they've started to look at those things. This is a healthy thing for an organization to do, provided it doesn't get, it's not too aggressive.
Yeah, I'm just curious on their reaction, you know, are the reactions like what you're saying? We can still get the work done, so now do I do something different to get it done?
And Amy, you know, Amy has been in the HR department, has been meeting with staff since day one, and regarding to staffing plans, staffing requirements. We've been reviewing this, and it's been, like Eric mentioned, it's been coming to a head, okay? And this is where we're at at this point in time.
Well, okay, let me get to, right to the meat of what I'm thinking here. So I'm asking you what their staff's reaction is, because what you just told me, I mean, that's fine, I get that. But if there's a reaction that's really adamant against what we're trying to do, I'd like to know what it is and maybe understand why. You know, maybe there's something we need to consider too. You know, I'm not saying that we'd go along with it, I'm just saying, there might be something there that we are missing. I know she's done her work, I'm not taking anything-
And nobody likes to-
And nobody wants to cut. I mean, I get that, I get that. It's just, it's a work question, it's just a best of question.
No, it's a good question, Martin.
And I want to say, you know, with all of the groups that we've met with, and Denise's group, you know, and the second page has actually some position reductions, including when people would lose their job completely. Everybody we met with was so extremely professional, disappointed, obviously, in losing their position or in the parents' teachers' group reducing to part-time status. There's disappointment, some frustration, but they all understand, or seem to understand, what the district is trying to do, and they want to, they want to help support that in the best way possible. But there are reactions to that as well, and disappointment.
And Martin, and this is something I don't know if everybody wants to hear or not either, but in trying to analyze this over the course of the last eight months, what it looks like to me is that prior decisions or administrative moves, instead of actually giving people wage increases or salary increases, they tried to increase the-
Calendar.
The calendar days or the benefits side. And all's I'm trying to look at is honestly, is bringing the organization back to a better, balanced, efficient mode. Get the pay where it needs to be. Really, ultimately, what you'd like to see is less day worked and your daily rate of pay go up.
I know, that's what, it is what happened with the support staff. The support staff, the holiday pay over Christmas, you know, that was in dual raises years ago.
And sometimes organizations have to look at that when the money is tight, I get that. But real quick, what you'll see, and I sent that out to the board, if you recall, that committee and everybody was very good with it, to where, keep the twelve paid holidays plus six additional paid days off for a balance of eighteen instead of the twenty-three. So really, it was a compromise. We're getting five more days worked on twelve-month employees, they're still keeping, you know, five days off. So that's going to be coming too on the fourteen.
Okay, we're heading. On the, that three oh nine eight forty-nine, should that number be the two ninety-nine four fifty-three forty-nine or whatever?
Yes, it should be, it didn't carry over correctly. Yes. So it would be a little bit, little bit less than that. Yes, that is correct.
Can I ask about the autism program facilitator, twenty days taken off of that? I know that that is an ever-increasing group that continues to grow. Twenty days means a lot.
It does. And you're right, our autism, our group of children on autism spectrum disorder has grown. Having an autism facilitator bubbled up out of a strong need for having someone that's a board-certified behavior analyst. So her work in those before and after days really was to help those incoming students and help our process consultant team determine comparable services for children on autism spectrum disorder. We've worked very diligently, I would say, in the last five to eight years to build very strong competent programs. I can, without hesitation, say, I believe it's, that we can fade back that strong presence of that person on the front and end of school and bring them in during a typical teacher contract day. So some of her work had been in developing professional development. Kind of once you get a good PD plan in place and developed, you can, it makes it re-easier to retool it for the next year. So the person holding that position, and I believe she's been with us three or four years now, she's done tremendous work during that time, but I don't think it's going to negatively impact classroom opportunities for our students. If I thought it would, I would shy away from it quickly. But you do have something to consider. It is a very important group of students for us to take care of, but it's still relatively a small percentage of those nineteen-hundred students. So you need to consider kind of the ratio of a small group with a very focused professional for their programming. And I think this I can live with, and I think we, our staff can live with too.
Well, I just get nervous when there's cuts with the special needs students, and I know that that's always, we get lots of emails from parents and lots of things happen in that area, so I just want to make sure that we are not cutting anything there that would threaten us in any way.
And I would be the first to bring in appropriate support if I thought we were in lack of what we needed to keep fidelity in our programs.
Compliant.
I think she answered that question at the beginning.
Compliance, in terms of federal compliance, but also-
Just questioning.
Just fidelity of programming. You have to keep, maintain structure, strong curriculum practices. Sometimes those things can get loose if behaviors from our students begin to interfere with their learning or that of others. So if I saw a great need for her to develop new professional development, or coming before after to prep teachers, we can always hold them back in and come to you and ask for a few days' extra, additional work to meet an urgent, critical need.
I just know that over the years, I've heard from special ed teachers that, especially on the PD side, that they are not getting adequate PD that helps them with the students that they have.
I would agree. I get frequent requests for more in professional development. I think we're doing better, but with children with disabilities, every little splinter, I mean, there's over thirteen individual categories alone anyway, and within some of those, there are then multiple subcategories. So we could feed them continuously with good PD.
I just know that that was a concern, so I want to make sure that-
Any other questions here? Move on to the teacher salary schedule then?
Well, I have questions about the second page.
Yeah.
These are positions you're recommending to eliminate or shrink down to part-time. So the paraprofessional is a special ed para?
Will be, and we believe we'll be able to do that through attrition versus actually reduction between now and the end of the year.
Okay, so I remember that when we started as board members, Lori and I, that parents' teachers, staff were at part-time at that point. And so that you're looking at going back to that to save the money. But I have to say that I sort of think of them as like teachers, where we don't want to reduce the number of teachers or the pay for the teachers, because even though these kids are not currently in school, they're going to be in school. And we have such a large group of parents that need assistance with teaching the kids, that I feel like this is important part.
This is actually on the benefits side where our savings is, is that correct?
The greatest amount would be in benefits. Their annualized salary is not excessive. So when you- So when you take them down to 29 hours each, the mass, the majority of that saving is not in salaries, it's going to be in benefits.
But the thing with the parents' teachers is that the more time that they have to be in the homes, our revenue end goes up.
That is correct.
That is the only.
And based on high-need families.
Yes. But the whole purpose of getting a 7-0 vote to take them back to full-time was that we want to get those kids because through the practice process, we found out that 52% of our kids come to school not prepared. And when you get to, why we're here is to educate children, the earlier that we get them, the more benefit it is. And then in the long run, it benefits us because the students understand that.
But you believe you can still meet that same number of kids and families?
There, that's not true.
Let, let her answer the question. Everybody agrees with what Lori just said. Let her answer the question because she proposed this saying this would not impact the education of kids. So let her answer the question.
In their opinion, they will see fewer students. You're already subsidizing it anyway, so it may come up. But what their first priority to let go will be group activities, open playtime, open gym time. Those things will be not, things that are not irreversible, like a home visit, will be the first to be eliminated out of the programming.
The home visit is not to be eliminated, first thing is the group activities.
Group act, non-reversible, non-reversible events would be the first items to see reduced in their programming.
But see, that's part of the whole educating the whole child. Is those social interactions will help. Because there was something that I was reading not too long ago that talked about students that come to school and they don't have empathy for other students. Those students don't interact with other kids outside of where they live, basically. And in educating the whole kid, you want to bring them in, give them social activities, let them see how they're supposed to work with other kids, grow that empathy and.
And this is the whole philosophical struggle, Lori. You're right, don't get me wrong. When, when you take a look and if we could do everything we could do, but we're currently funding this $185,000 more roughly, more than what we received. And the.
The breakdown that we got was like $19,000.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the email here because they were losing income.
And I'm basing this off the 14, 15 school year, the final ASBR report. We, we fund this, we funded it for 14, 15 school year at approximately $185,000 local dollars. Okay, more than what they brought in at state dollars. And that's the question, that's the question.
How many teachers is this?
How much do you want to fund at local dollars?
I think these are like the teachers that we talked about not wanting to cut their salaries for because these people are teachers of our potential students.
Well, and this is a program where, where there are outcomes. This is a program where they do see success with students.
Yeah, because Debbie is looking at this right now, she's collecting all of the data and they're tracking those kids. And the kids that come in, that their parents are part of the parents' teachers program, the parents are more involved, so the kids are more involved. So it's a win-win all around and this would be detrimental, I think, to our kids to take this back, to this, this folks going back to half-time. When we voted on it, I specifically said that if we are not going to sustain this, don't do it.
But that hasn't been this year.
No, it was when we voted on it, right after we got on the board.
I guess my question would be is how, how much, how much time would there be less given to these early childhood kids?
27% based on that.
I mean, how much, how much, because, you know, reading that email that we got from one of the faculty, it sounded like they were doing a lot of building relationships with organizations as well.
They do that too.
And so, I mean, is, that was my.
When they went to part-time.
They were actually spending time with kids and with parents. I mean, how much of, I mean, that's what we need to be looking at.
That's exactly right. That's, that's my question is that you've got eight teachers and based on this, if, if you, if you left it at full-time based on your recommendation, you could have six. I mean, that's my question is do we need eight full-timers? You either have eight part-timers or six full-timers, you got the same equation. And that's I think where Brad's headed is, I agree with Lori, I mean, it's an important program, but it sounds to me like we've got either too many teachers there because you're advocating cutting back the hours.
I had not considered that.
Well, this email has some statistics in there about this year's kindergarten class. So kids who are in parents' teachers, there was 19% go, needed special education referrals, where then when they had non-parents' teachers' kids, it was 24%. So they're able to get help for the kids earlier and get them out of the special needs category when they're beginning school. And that's a savings for us and less of a burden on the district too. I mean, I just think that this is like a teacher and we talked about not wanting to cut them.
That's a point, that's, I would like to sometimes see that tracked, see, see the PAT kids track through the entire K-12 career.
Debbie's working on that right now.
Mrs. Coons is working on that now. We've had interns helping her gather that data.
And I think a lot of the relationship building is Debbie. I don't think that that is the actual educators themselves that are going and doing that because I know that I'm on an advisory committee with them and Debbie Espen did that several years ago. And she's the one that's kind of doing a lot of that, reaching out and trying to get people to come together and work on this because everyone in this, and I think you know that as soon as you got on board that, that you had a lot of emails.
Yeah, and at the time, we were just looking to make a 5% reduction.
So this whole community really understands the importance. The importance of this is huge and the implication for our futures of district because if we can catch them early enough, that only helps us in the long run. I know for a fact that a really good friend of mine, her daughter was having issues when she was a little one. And these are not folks that were low-income. And she took the little girl to the, numerous doctor specialists. It was the parent educator who came and noticed that there was something going on with her eyelashes, they were growing in instead of out. Had the parent educator not caught that, that little, that girl could be bought blind.
Lori, everybody agrees with you 1,000%. We agree. The question here is whether she needs eight full-time or six full-time, that's the question.
I, I think this would be one of the items we could wait for to get more information on. Because that'd be interesting to see how much time is spent with servicing kids.
Exactly.
Well, I think more importantly though, it's going to be is, is how much the board wants to spend above and beyond state dollars, state aid.
But if they're spent, if they have a 40-hour work week and they only spend 15 hours actually with kids and parents.
Correct. Then we only need five full-timers.
That's what I'd be interested in seeing.
Denise, can you go back and take a look at that?
I will.
That will give us better information.
And then I just have one other question about the licensed professional counselor. Where's that going to come from? Where's that cut coming from?
That is a, that's one FTE, one full-time equivalent. What we will ask of our educational teams is to pull those teams back together and consider if, if there's been, what type of progress has been made on those goals, what those goals look like. And I guess it's kind of, a licensed professional counselor is a wonderful addition to any school district. But there are opportunities for social and emotional behavioral support that, that the special education teacher, guidance counselor mentors could take on, so.
We can meet this need, believe, with elsewhere.
I think we.
She's asking where the cut's coming from.
Well, yeah, is it coming from a school counselor? I mean, is it, this is, so this isn't the school counselors, this is somebody that we contract out.
Someone on the outside.
No, it's, it's a full-time employee, it's a full-time employee of the school district.
But we could contract that service if we needed it.
That is my plan B. If we have a significant need, I mean, you can see the cost of the salary and benefits. If you had a significant need where an IP determined that that was a necessity for the child to make progress, because this is a related service, you could contract out for those very specific direct student hours for a much lower cost to the district.
So this is someone who is housed in your office or?
The location of their, of the office space is at the Colgan Alternative Resource Center.
Okay, so it's, okay. But I, when I looked at that too, I wasn't for sure whether we were eliminating an elementary school counselor. I mean, we were going back the other way with all the issues that are out there now, so why did you ask that?
This was a standalone within special services to provide a related service.
So when Colgan Center, where you fake that and we go to Webster, then they're not going to have their own counselor there as they do now?
No, they will. This, this licensed professional counselor was not just for students at the Alternative Resource Center.
So this person would just kind of go out and do wherever there was a high need?
Yes.
Okay.
She's telling you this is an extra permission.
We did not consider whether or not it would be absolutely cheap to contract it out as opposed to have someone who will.
Yes, because I'm aware of how many hours a week are directly with students. And even if all of those were continued to be required, it would still be a savings to the district.
Morgan, she's just being nice, she's telling you this is just plain excess.
Yeah, that's what.
No, I mean, it'd be like if we had 15 parents' teachers, full-time students, I mean, full-time teachers, you'd have too many.
Thank you. Before Amy gets into the teacher salary schedule, I really would suggest you, you read the DESI resource standards that are handed out, not, not, you know, don't do it immediately, but it's on DESI's website. Get a chance or of course in the next two weeks, take a look at it, read it, it's good insight.
Talking about teacher ratios.
Very staff ratios.
Hey, you have information coming around to you right now that we're passing out. What we want to accomplish today, we're going to be talking about the compensation study, but we're going to be drilling down and specifically talking today about the teacher salary schedule. What I've, what we've laid out here to you today, did everybody get a copy of that? What I've laid out to you today is, is again, the process that we've gone through and then drilling down into the teacher salary schedule and some of the options that we're presenting today. So the first page of, of the document again goes over what C-Biz did as a salary study process. What we've done since that time, so as, as part of this process, we asked C-Biz to come back to us and provide us kind of an outlook for the teacher salary schedule that showed by district, by the teacher positions. They were not able to provide that information, that is not something they typically do. And so they did not provide that. So with Wes's help and Wes's group's help, we went back and pulled salary schedules from the same districts. They're all on the websites for the teacher salary service and did a comparison. And you'll see that information in here. So what I'd like to do is kind of go through this and then talk through the options that, that we're presenting here today. And then we can have further discussion on where we go from here. With regard to this, starting on page two, you have a current teacher salary schedule. Page three and page four are just current day teacher salary schedule and the Hilliard teacher salary schedules. So that's what's in place today. All of the salary schedules are currently indexed off of the base salaries, which today the base salary for teachers is the $34,986.
Why is there such a difference between the Hilliards teacher salary schedule and the schools? There's a huge difference between the starting salaries.
There is, there is. When you look at, at some of the teachers or the teachers at Hilliards and the specialized areas that they're in, a lot in the medical field, dental fields to attract good candidates, that's why they've developed a schedule that they have for the Hilliard.
Plus, don't they cover their own expenses out there at Hilliard with tuition?
A lot of them do, yes, a lot of the programs do.
So these were usually professionals outside of the district that have come to the district to teach.
I have another question before you get into the meat of this. The options that you presented in here, do they have summation totals of the cost impact?
Yeah, we'll get to those.
Okay, and then if I can, make one more comment. We need to keep this simple.
I'm going to, I can get through this really quickly and simple, I really can.
I just meant from an application standpoint, I mean, we, but we are, everybody knows we've got a $2 to $4 million problem with compensation in teachers' pairs and support staff, okay, across, across the district. I mean, you should present this. If I was doing this, I'd look at the lowest comp and the teacher ratio of the teacher salary, which is basically 34,9 or 35,000. I'd bump it by 7%, that gives you a fixed number of roughly 2,500 bucks and I'd apply it across all your steps, 2,500 bucks for everybody. That equates to about a 5% increase across the board, which is roughly $3 million, which is right in the hardware we need to be. That's $3 million including the pairs, everything. And keep it simple. And then you've got some issues within the ranges that you've got to fix or tweak because they're really out of whack with the master's degrees and some of that kind of stuff. And you tweak it and you're done. I don't know if that's what you presented because I went through the whole thing because we got it yesterday.
What, this?
Yeah.
You got this frustrated?
Yeah.
I didn't have it done till this morning, so.
I meant we got the attachment yesterday, this I haven't seen till today.
Okay.
Go ahead though.
Okay.
Just keep it simple.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to try. All right, so you've got the two teacher, then we go into the district comparisons. And, and again, we did this because we didn't get the information from C-Biz. So as you look at the district comparisons, the first is just something C-Biz did provide, which is the organizational data comparisons, enrollment, free and reduced lunch for your information. But as we get into the next spreadsheet, you have broken down on each spreadsheet, the first one we'll just talk about and I'll go through because they're all, they're all outlined the same. You have your bachelor's degree.
Wait, before you, before you go on, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but this is important, I think. And I don't know if it's here. Each school, each school district works various days. So I know Park Hill works 10 more days than what St. Joe, is that accounted for in here, yes?
That is not.
Okay.
We just took the teachers' base salaries and put them in here, so that's not accounted for.
Because that will, that changes how you look at it, okay.
Okay. So what we have is under the bachelor's degree, you have St. Joe bachelor's degree column there. And then for each of the other school districts, you have the column. So someone coming in with just a bachelor's degree, currently we run 19 steps on our bachelor's degree column. As you can see, going across, there are various, various school districts and then what they do. What we did is we took an average of those, those school districts and did a comparison and then compared them based on the comp study proposal. As you go across the school districts, the average runs about. The average runs about 36,189 across districts for a starting base pay for teacher positions. As the comp study showed in the proposal, they proposed around a $35,000 comp study proposal. That would have been a net change of $14 to our current salary schedule. So as we look across, across that schedule, we did the averages down the column and the net changes. So each one of the columns, bachelor's, bachelor's plus 16, master's degree are outlined in the same fashion, going across with each of the school districts and then averaging out each of the steps. So you have quite a few pages of those, I won't go through each of those, that's information that, that will be helpful.
Do you have any idea why there's such a variation on, like we got 19 and then, you know, we've got 10 and then some 30 and then others that aren't?
You mean how many steps there are for bachelor's?
Yeah.
Every school district does it differently.
Some of them want people to get their master's.
Yeah, it depends on how fast you want to progress people.
What we would like to recommend on that is to back off BS column to 10, grandfather anybody in that's currently there, to the 9th. Grandfather, anybody in that's currently there to the nineteen, go BS plus sixteen at twenty and masters to thirty. Let's make it ten, twenty, and thirty.
Simplify.
Can I ask a question? I heard what you said, I agree. If you look at, if you look at, if you look at the bachelor's page, okay, and go down to step six where it shows ours is thirty-nine, two fifty-four. Go to step six, thirty-nine to two fifty-four, and you go across and look at all the schools. Forty-three, twenty-six, forty, forty-one, forty-one, thirty-eight, forty, thirty-eight, thirty-eight, forty-two, thirty-eight. And then the comp study proposed a decrease in pay to thirty, that makes no sense. Every of the competing districts are higher than us and in that case they proposed a decrease?
Some of them are not.
Is that the calendar days then that they were?
No, it's because they took everybody, when they did it, they took the people's salaries. They didn't compare it to the steps on the compensation study. That's why we did it this way, so you could see.
Well, this is correct. What they did was wrong.
Correct. That's what, that's the point.
That's why, that's why we turned our focus since really February one to the salary schedule.
And as you see, as we go through these options.
That, that's why we give difficulty anyway.
No, that's alright.
No, no, thank you.
We hear you Wes, well done people.
Clears it up.
But as we outline the options.
But you also have to notice that these other groups that don't go to step six, they're just maintaining at that amount. So you have to think of their step six for North Kansas City is thirty-seven, seven, one, eight, and for Center it's thirty-eight, eight, fifty-five. They just stay at that, that same step unless they get a masters and move up.
Can I cut to the chase here for a second? What we'd like to recommend, Amy, is, and I think the, personally, I would recommend steps and movement. I'll let you guys debate that in a second. But that includes what I just mentioned. Backing off on bachelors to, to ten years. Grandfather, everybody in that's currently there, okay? So they completed on out for twenty years of BS plus sixteen, then took a thirty at masters. You want to encourage people getting their masters and moving over. We're also recommending dropping and limiting, eliminating steps past thirty-one. In other words, they do not continue to get that long, long journey.
Should we top out?
They top out at thirty-one years.
I think currently it says forty-five.
If, if above thirty-one, they're, they're freeze. Five of them are currently, I believe that's correct, five or six less.
We had to add a couple of Hilliards in there, so there's seven. But that would have been, it's right.
Those, those seven would be frozen.
That would, that are at step thirty-one.
That are above the step thirty-one in the whole district?
Sure.
But if, okay, just seven?
You want to encourage people to move down and across that, that hopefully we're getting those best teachers and keeping those throughout the scheduling system.
So how many teachers never go on and get anything past a bachelor's?
I got that broke down.
Because I mean, we've got to, you know, vent these steps on that, so.
Can we throw that up on the screen Wes?
But isn't that a part of what they have to do now?
I can tell you, we have three hundred two teachers that have bachelors.
Yeah, PD, so many hours of PD for reason, for continued to.
I want to make sure everybody hears it.
For their state.
Okay.
It's not license, certificate, don't they?
It's PD. I thought that said go back and get the hours of.
Are working towards their masters.
We currently have three hundred two teachers on the bachelor column. Ninety-one teachers, the BA plus sixteen, three hundred forty-six on the masters, forty-three on masters sixteen, thirty-five on the masters thirty-two, thirty-six on the masters forty-eight, and seven on the doc.
Can you email it to all of us?
Or say it again?
You can, after this meeting, we'll email out the spreadsheets that all work with all of this.
How many did you get?
His spreadsheets have a lot more of just detail.
A lot of information. I just didn't want to send this to Eric because Eric would have started messing with everything and I didn't want to get it all messed up. What, what is? No offense Eric, I just.
No, no, I was right, I was.
Amy, Amy, what, what is, Amy Wes, what is the cost just for steps and movement?
Alright, we're good.
Yeah, so steps and movement. If you skip to the very last page, it would be option one is for steps and movement.
Explain that to me real quick, just the, the page. I mean, I thought a BA started at thirty-four nine, why does it show twenty-seven, eight?
Yeah, I was confused about that too.
That's, this, okay, this is the cost per, for, for us to change to a step option one. This is cost, this is not the salary schedule.
Okay, we ought to.
So it says teacher salary schedule, implementation, cost per step.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
So that's what the increase is gonna be?
The actual increase to.
Ah.
It's whatever it is, so much per person.
Right.
But can we see that on the average per person or in the, in each step and the count so we can kind of get an idea? Or at least pump it up against the actuals? Take the actual seventeen hundred person employment schedule, show the current actual and bump this up against it so we can see it in a whole spreadsheet?
I thought it's done that way Eric, I just didn't send it out. What we did was we, I figured total cost. So there's so many people on step two on a BA. What that step cost is per person, and I took a times the amount of people that were on that step to get you the cost.
So what's the average increase on?
The average increase on the BA.
Step two.
I can't remember the spreadsheet.
What's the thousand sixteen?
Because it looks like we have the biggest deficiency on our step six people.
Well, our step six people, there's a bigger jump because that's when they get their tenure.
So you get an increase.
Alright, so our steps, so our BA steps, one through five, one through five is five hundred twenty-five dollars per step.
Five hundred twenty-five dollars per step?
And then when it, that's, this is the BA. And then when it gets to step six, it jumps twenty-one, sixty-nine. So the tenure year, we, we are rewarding teachers for sticking with us and being properly trained. So they get a bigger step that year. And then after that, it goes back about five twenty-five depending on the increase.
But what's the increase from current to the proposal for step two? Just give me an idea.
We didn't increase anything. We just took our, our current schedule and stepped everybody.
I know. So you, the step is the five twenty-five you're referencing?
Right. It's not per person because anybody that's on step six, it's twenty-one, sixty-nine. Because that's on our current sta, schedule, when they go from five to six, that's their tenure year. They get a bigger raise because they've stuck with us and they become tenured.
This is all, I mean, this is based off current staff.
This is the way our.
Obviously, that's a moving target.
And that, and this is a snapshot. This doesn't take into account anybody that's going to move.
Right, right, right.
So these are estimates, these aren't going to be actual numbers.
Just on step with no increase.
Correct.
And this.
That's option one.
And that impacts the people where they lie, the eight hundred and sixty-nine teachers, it impacts almost every one of them, correct?
Yeah, it's everybody.
Everyone except for the people that are maxed.
If we freeze them, then they won't get increases. There, there's seven people that if he freezes them, well, take that back. Depends how we do it.
Okay, this looks like it doesn't even approach the costs or the differential in comp. And I don't have much to weigh on the comp study now with it being all screwed up, but I mean.
Well, that's why, that's option three.
Well, really, you're looking at six hundred eighty-three thousand dollars for just steps and movement estimate.
But that's if we just leave things the way they are and don't make any changes.
Yeah, that's if we leave things the way they are, implementing those, those freezes at thirty-one with those recommendations. This isn't showing the freezes.
It does not show the freezes. That shows that every single person's getting any increase.
Okay, so just to be, to make sure, this option one, for example, we're, we're taking our fifteen, sixteen salary schedule and.
Just step in there.
At BA step two, it says twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars. So that's anyone at step one now going to step two.
You notice there's nobody on step one. So basically, I took everybody that was on step one this year, I just took everybody and moved them down a step.
Gotcha.
And so that's going to cost everyone that's at step one going to step two is going to be twenty-seven, eight hundred and fourteen.
That's what it's going to cost for all those people that are on step one, that's our total cost.
And that's how it's for every step there.
Every step. That's why there's blanks, because there's nobody on those steps.
Okay, good option two.
Option two is where.
Option two, um, option two is where we took the information, the current salary schedule, and we took the base to a thirty-six thousand dollar base. That was based off of the results of the district comparisons that we did, that being the average.
You did, not the comp study that's screwed up.
Correct, correct. So we moved it to thirty-six thousand. That is what this option will show and the cost involved with leaving everyone on this, indexed the same way throughout. So it's just taking the thirty-six thousand and applying it to our current indexes throughout. That's not adjusting any indexes. You start adjusting the indexes and that cost is going to go up dramatically. I'm not saying that that doesn't need to be reviewed, but we need to determine if that's a year one review or.
How do the indexes compare to the actuals?
As we compare it, I knew you were going to ask this question, as we compare, we, we don't lose on the starting pay. If you look at our averages compared to all the districts, our starting pay's dead on. Where we lose is going down. Now, when you start messing with going down, it's a considerable amount of money. Because if you start comparing these.
We do lose about two grand.
At the masters column especially.
You look at some, yeah, if you go to the masters, it's considerable.
No, I get it, I know what you're saying, it's less of a deviation at the beginning, but we are short. The thirty-six thousand makes sense, we're at thirty-four, nine, and everybody else is thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-seven, thirty-eight. There's a few thirty-fives in there, but.
Right.
I hear you.
But, but when you go across, as the masters, the doctor, those columns, that's where your big discrepancies are, is when you compare across the other districts.
This is roughly a two point nine percent increase.
So, but if the two point nine percent across the board?
Yeah.
That's kind of disproportionate for higher.
It's two point nine percent on base.
Each step is indexed back to that first.
Right. So the percentage is changing.
Well, and that, and I'll take that back Eric, that's just on base. Then you add the step in that, that's fifteen hundred dollars. Okay.
But this option two includes a step, right?
I get you, but what I mean, it's about two grand or more.
Yep.
That's exactly right.
So option two is a step plus moving the base pay to thirty-six thousand. So everybody's goes up just because the base pay has gone up and all their indexes go up, and then they also get a step.
And does option two address the differentials in the masters and the doctorate pieces? And what do we think the impact of that is?
That we don't have at this point. It, it is going to take a considerable amount. As we look and as we looked across districts to try to find some consistency to that, it is all over the board to find a, a good indexing.
We don't need to be at the top end, but we need to be competitive.
The total cost of this one thousand dollar to thirty-six thousand dollar base is one point two seven million. It almost doubles.
Just on rough estimates, because I'm pulling out the pairs and the nutritional services and the other support staff, that would be in that three million plus range to get things corrected. And this, you'll have to run the numbers on it, but just back of the envelope stuff, this is probably another six to eight hundred thousand to fix the.
The middle groups.
To fix the men, the indexes for the middle groups.
It might be higher.
It's going to be a lot more than that.
You think?
Oh, considerable. We did it at our district and when we changed, just adding a hundred dollars to every step, cost us, it increased our salaries ten percent just doing that. A hundred dollars. We were a smaller district.
I'm talking about getting into competition because the differential.
That wasn't even getting us to competition.
The differential, again, it's based on a comp study, I think that was probably some of that stuff.
Whatever, yeah.
You had a two to four million dollar deficiency there. To get you in the heart of that, about three million bucks, you've already given us one point two and that's only for the teachers. You've still got the other people that were deficient, which was the pairs and nutritional services, some of the support staff.
If we increase the base, every salary schedule we currently have is tied to the teacher base. So when we put that thirty-six thousand on the other schedules, it's going to compensate them also.
If we leave the.
If we leave, right, exactly.
If we leave the index.
If we leave them all indexed.
But the one point two is on the teachers.
It's only the admin one, I think that's the thing divorcing.
We need to see that.
I know. We were just looking for direction on.
What we need to know here today is a latitude to go back to meet confer. What that latitude is, if you want to leave it up to what we just showed you and work with the teachers on that? Or is there something else?
I, I'll throw this out there, I mean, based on, again, calculations and what it looks like you're going to be able to rationalize out of the excesses in the district to get to that balanced budget number to go forward and provide accountability to the public, I think you've probably got about three million dollars to play with to get teachers, pairs and some of the support staff.
I wouldn't disagree with that.
The right number and still be able to come very close to balancing the budget. Any more than that, you're not going to be able to pay for without depleting reserves and things like that that aren't sustainable.
Well, if we, if we allow Wes to go back and run the numbers on support staff with everything basically tied into what we've proposed.
Yes.
I mean, all, that, that's the whole kicker to this. You're, you're talking about all these variables, everything we're looking at, holistically, balanced budget, where does this all fit in? We believe it's in this neighborhood.
Agreed.
Of one point two to one point five million.
I think what you've done here is a really good start, but we need to see all the information. I won't play with it, I'm going to look at it.
I know you need to see everything Eric, this is our starting point. I, I didn't want to spend a ton of time, and I'm going to say time, on doing everybody's. If you would have looked at this and said, this is crap, I don't want this.
No, I get it.
You know, because that's what.
I've spent hours looking at this nonsense from Cbis and I might as well throw it in the garbage.
This is, this is good information. Thank you very much. And I would say yes, go back and look to see.
Yes, how much is it going to be if we, and how much is it increased then?
But with the support.
As we move forward, what then we'll try to work with meet confer on is within this range currently. And then also taking the piece of support staff.
Yes.
Okay, because it is indexed and it's all tied. Run those numbers, we'll bring some things back to you on the fourteen in regards to all that. And be able to move forward with, you know, teacher amounts, contracts on the twenty-eighth. Support staff will come in, in April, okay? I mean, and as we look at support staff extra duty, that's why I tried to stage this out that way. But that, that gives you a direction and idea of where we're looking at moving towards.
I think you guys did a great job.
Yeah.
Thank you for looking, you know, looking at the districts.
I say it's imperative, you're going to keep bringing stuff to us with these optimizations and rationalization plans to create, eliminate these excesses to pay for this stuff.
But I also want to bring up the fifty-some staff members that aren't on the right step.
Can you, can you help address that, Amy?
Because we keep hearing that, or I know I do, that there are some people that are not on the right, on the right step because some people, first of all, there were freezes. Some people got a step or two back and some people didn't get a step back. So I feel like this is probably a really good opportunity for us to get everybody where they should be and start afresh.
So, so when I first came on, I had inundated, I would say is the word, with questions about salaries and concerns on whether individuals were on the right step. So we went through an extensive effort with individuals to, to look at the proper steps that they were on based on the salary schedules that were approved. And so the individuals, and, and I know what you're referring to, why it happened, I don't know, but it wasn't approved to salary schedule. So you've got two, two things that really have, have occurred. One is you've had, there were two freezes in the most recent years. One of those freezes was given back the next year, which left one that was previously frozen and never given, given back. So note that, that, that's still in place and that goes back to early two thousand, I believe. Then you have in two thousand and four, we found information on the salary schedule. This is, this is what, where we don't know the reasons behind it, but people were lined out based on years of service. And if you had, and I wish I would have brought the information because I have it all and can show you that. But people were given extra steps based on their years of service. Some were given more, so if you had less than ten years of service, no additional steps were given, okay? So you just got the normal step that year. If you had ten or more, it was kind of indexed out where you got additional steps. Again, I don't know the reason that that worked that way, but what I'm, I found during this review is that the individuals fell on that salary schedule and fell according to those salary schedules. So those are the two areas that I, that I know and they continue to come up and, and, and I continue to hear about. So it's a matter of a freeze, one year, and only if those people were here during that year that they never got back. And then two thousand and four, I believe, was the year that it, there was, I'll call it a funky schedule, it was a little bit different.
Some people got compensated for lieu of insurance.
That wasn't, that was just last year.
Is that just last year?
Yeah.
That, that went away and.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that really.
There used to be a stipend that people got for not taking the insurance, they got to pay the stipend.
And.
Yeah.
That was last year.
You're probably talking about fifty employees, fifty teachers. Roughly maybe a hundred thousand dollars. My question is. My question is, do you want to go back and correct something that occurred a decade ago?
Let me ask you a question.
I don't know.
And she can answer, she can, she can answer the question, but this is more a comment for the rest of you guys, because she's seen it. When you, when you freeze salaries in business or anyplace else, let's say you freeze and nobody gets an increase that year, the next year, they might get a three percent or five percent or whatever. You don't go back and make up for the freeze and give them a ten percent increase. It defeats the purpose of the freeze. That's ridiculous. The freeze is a freeze, and then you go on from there. You basically lose that forever. Otherwise, you don't need the freeze.
Well, those of us who have retired from the district with those freezes did lose that. I mean, that's.
And I think there's confusion, because there was one year that there was freeze, and they were able to make that up the following year.
So apparently that's where they're kind of getting off on, on what it is where they should be.
That's part of it, and then the other is the two thousand four.
Our recommendation is to leave. We told MSTA that, they, they keep pushing it, but our, that's why we've not brought it forth to the board. Our recommendation is to leave.
Well, to me, if they're where they are now, based on that standard or whatever that practice was and that decision at that time, that's-
That's what it is.
-the correct step they should be on.
And that's what I found as I went through this.
So if they're basing their decisions for complaints on our past practices, right? Correct.
Well, there's a whole audit book of that, so let's, let's not go there.
So are we done with this?
So we're going to find out how much it costs to do this across the board.
We'll be bringing back through meet and confer recommendations. Hopefully, we get to some things with the, with the meet and confer based off this meeting and also the numbers from support staff. I would agree with Eric that this is even a discussion with Wes. Wes, help me here if I'm wrong, but it is roughly a three million figure we're dealing with.
Owen.
Compensation.
Compensation.
How much would go up if we did?
If you do one point two, it'll be about another eight hundred dollars.
No, but he means inclusive for everybody but administration. He's probably going to be questioning three million dollar mark.
To get everybody to where they should be.
To fix the indexes and did you, did you?
No, fixing the indexes will make it more.
One point two for the teachers.
It's about forty-one percent, sixty-one percent. It's, it's, it's coming out about two million across the district.
Well, that's what I said to begin with, you said, no, that's not enough.
Not enough what? Listen, if I change the indexes going down, it's going to be a lot of money. I'm just saying if we take that thirty-six thousand on our current index.
Okay, we're talking about looking at the indexes too.
Oh, I know, but it's going to be huge, depending on what we do.
Let's just look at it and see what we got.
But two million if we do the thirty-six thousand.
If we, if we do thirty-six on current indexes, everything, nothing changes.
Right.
It costs us about two million.
That is doable.
Okay.
Well, we need to know if that fixes all the problems that the compensation study identified.
It won't.
No.
We need to address the issue, because the turnover rate's the real issue, which is a function of two things, comp and class size.
And environment.
Yeah, culture.
So.
That's the biggest worry.
After Newhart, I, I just want to make sure the board understands where the conversation I just had. Amy, she says she's confident that everyone now is on the correct step, that she has had conversation with that question where they're supposed to be. And so if everybody's where they should be now, then we should be going forward, not backwards.
Okay.
Two, three point two point two.
I wanted to bring this back to the board. So the directive for the board and the vote was to freeze administrators' salaries and have the mileage that was rolled in last year rolled out for this upcoming year. So as, as I did that and as I put this together, what you have is a, is a list, or what's posted is a list of the current administrators that have been approved. So it's only the directors and principals, so those are the ones that have been approved. So as we do this, and as we go through this schedule, what we have is their current base salary, and then rolling out their mileage, and then I'm placing them back on a step on the salary schedule. So when you take their current base salary, you roll out mileage, they will not fall on a step on the salary schedule. That doesn't match up, that amount with a step. So what I did was match them to the closest step up, not down. Down would have taken more money away from them than the mileage, but taking them up may not take the full amount of mileage away in all cases.
So basically, you're just asking for latitude to put them on the closest step.
To put them on the closest step.
Which is the right thing to do.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, and that's all I'm asking. I don't want to apply this consistently.
In most cases, these are flat. You got a couple up, but most of them are flat, right?
A lot of them are. I mean, on this schedule, the difference, the difference is thirteen thousand dollars on, for these individuals. Again, this is just principles and.
Thirteen thousand.
Yes.
So what is the one?
But there are more people that had mileage rolled in, and as those get approved, and we all go through the same process with them.
So what is the one position going from two eleven to two sixty?
Do you want to talk to that?
And I'll address a little bit more in, in the organizational structure below directors, but that is the director of assessment and program reviews. Currently, that is on a two-hundred-and-eleven day calendar. What happens? That data comes in, and you're, you're working through the summer anyway to get that data prepared and back out in August. And in my opinion, no matter who's filling that position, the director of assessment needs to be a twelve-month position.
The question is, is the salary that you're proposing here where it needs to be compared to the other districts? Because this says ninety-six, two seventy-three. Is that, is that competitive? Is it too high? Is it, where is it?
For the administrators, we didn't look at that, because they, they were frozen. So this salary that's listed is just taking the daily rate times the two-hundred-and-sixty versus the two-hundred-and-eleven.
I get it, but this is a function of whether it's competitive or not. If it's, if it's too high, we shouldn't. I agree. It's probably a two-hundred-and-sixty day job, but it's whether or not the compensation makes sense as it compares to the market. And it may very well be perfectly fine, but you need to answer that question.
I will come back with that.
Well, we also need to discuss about the administrative salary schedule. The compensation study recommended not indexing the administrative salary schedule to the teacher salary schedule. And so currently, we have it indexed to that beginning teacher salary. Do we want it to only be indexed to itself?
Yeah.
We need to talk about that, too.
I think that's an important discussion.
But for this year, the salaries are frozen.
But with this caveat that when you roll the mileage out, you've got to get into it.
Right. I absolutely see that, absolutely.
Her point is, Cappy's point is valid, but really not for this year.
Right. It doesn't have to be decided this incident, but it's going to need to be addressed.
For next year, right.
Well, it probably needs, this one needs looking at on its own.
But it's not going to change for next year.
Right.
Right.
Understood.
Okay. Good with that?
Just to respond to Cappy's point, my personal input here is one individual board member, is that there's no way they should be indexed together, because the percentages, they're grossly disproportionate. You know, two percent or three percent on thirty-six thousand dollars is a different animal than three percent on a hundred thousand dollars. They should never be indexed on a percentage basis. That's crazy.
Wes and I have had this discussion, in all honesty.
Well, the index percentages for every schedule is different. So administrator doesn't get the same percentage increase that a teacher does. It looks like they get a bigger increase because their salaries are larger. You know, one percent on a hundred thousand's a lot different than one percent on three. So, so teachers are getting a larger raise on their steps than what the, than the administrative index.
I understand.
You could also completely go-
Well, but the, the index, also on the, I'm sorry.
You could also go completely away from an indexed schedule.
Because those index points, they were all over the place when they were presented to us when we first did that.
For the administrative schedule or for all the schedules?
For all of them.
For all of them.
They're on the.
It was one point two eight, one point seven.
Administrator should be on performance evaluation based on like period.
Oh, all the other ones, though, the reason they were indexed to the teacher schedules is because that way those groups were also represented when there's raises and things.
Can't get everything written down here, guys.
But then nobody ever represents them, and they never see an increase.
They're represented by the performance and how they're doing.
So that latitude, they understand.
Oh, they don't, they just step two, though. They have steps in hourly pay. They do the same thing.
You have a front and back sheet that basically represents the structure of what was presented on February eighth and February twenty-second of the directors below. I've got to get this off square peg. And really, if you look on the second sheet, it puts it in the true synopsis of looking to reduce from two administrators conducting high school at risk, adult ed, no options to one, eliminating the preschool center supervisor, eliminating summer school. That basically going back to a director and the building principals and whoever we would hire for that particular summer school or need, going back to your ten percent net summer school, okay? Assistant director of special services would be eliminated, but then create and add two new positions for an early childhood coordinator overseeing preschool ECSE and, I'm drawing a blank here, PAT, and then a coordinator of federal programs, which brings that all in line, which we drastically need, because that's an area that we've been audited and investigated on. And those would be two new positions, so people would have to apply for them. But I, I use the same similar salary structure, just to let you understand where I'm getting here, but it still would be a savings of basically ninety-five thousand dollars. But we'd like to move forward, advertise those new positions with this approval on March fourteenth.
Okay, so the two new positions, are those two sixty positions, two-hundred-and-sixty days, full-time?
Twelve months.
Is that the increase in salary? Is that why?
I'm not looking for that to change. Basically comparable to what the current positions are.
Yes.
Is it two sixty?
They're on the technical director's schedule.
So is that ten and a half?
I think so. I think it's two one.
Two-hundred-and-eleven days? That's a good question.
So then why the increase in pay? Because those other directors are not at that level at this point, that are technical directors, so.
Because, because of the additional responsibilities, what they were looking at when we were discussing it.
So this early childhood coordinator is going to take, that one position is going to take the place of three people currently?
There's still, if you look down through here, it's the same thing that you've seen for the last several board meetings with directors below that I presented. The very same thing. You still have a PAT supervisor. They would assume ECSE responsibilities, okay? No individual there. It would fall to the coordinator of early childhood. And preschool responsibilities, okay? So you're not going to replace a preschool supervisor there, okay? So you're bringing this all under one umbrella as far as responsibilities and oversight. Ultimately, it's going in to one center at NOINS, okay?
So then the, the person who's over parents' teachers now would no longer be in that director position?
The parents' teacher individual stays the same.
So that stays, okay.
Okay.
I'm trying to wrap my head around this.
Your preschool person, position is eliminated, would have the opportunity to reapply to a coordinator of early childhood overseeing and reporting to that coordinator of early childhood.
Okay.
And who does that person report to?
Sorry, Mark, go ahead.
Currently, that person reports to Denise.
Just Denise. The, but we think the, I have no problem with the structure you proposed. It makes perfect sense, but my question is, the differential in the comp goes from seventy to basically ninety-four thousand dollars for that early childhood coordinator position. That seems like a massive increase.
Well, the ECSE, is that part of the duties of the assistant director?
It's like everybody's doing it.
Everybody's doing it, so it's.
Is that a fair assessment on ECSE?
Tell me more. I'm just curious part of the question.
Well, the ECSE responsibilities, if that's going to fall under this coordinator of the early childhood, are those the responsibilities that the person who currently has the assistant position in special services, do they take up those?
No. She was going to.
Seventy-four eight, right?
It's more about direct supervision of the teacher. They do their evaluations, they do the classroom observations, monitor the student outcomes, curriculum, and instruction. It just, it just aligns things better. It would also give an opportunity, I could probably delegate them to that person.
So if we're doing, we're doing the assistant.
No, basically, that basically was.
Think you're just going to kind of take those responsibilities and kind of divvy them out?
Um, so what? The coordinator of federal programs, we're not full of our homeless, I believe, that's the saying.
Needs to be a little more supervisors.
From the director's.
Yeah, I'm going to make seventy-four eight, it's about eighty thousand.
So just to put more of the federal programs all under social services. And then one would be pre-k, and the other is basic way to school.
Okay.
Basically, what I'm doing here as well is you're, you're eliminating the tech director.
Spot.
Spot, I mean, from an organizational structure standpoint, and you're eliminating assistant directors. Really going with the structure of directors, coordinators, supervisors.
But we still have other tech. Other people are labeled technical directors today, right?
That's what I want to know. There still are other positions that are technical directors.
Not under this plan.
Where would those, where are those people going then?
That would be like.
Why not like, like the director of counseling? She's a technical director.
That would be a, a coordinator of counseling.
So we bumped them to technical director, now we're bumping them back down.
You're eliminating, it's, it's terminology.
It's the title.
It's terminology.
But we were told when we made those decisions that that's how it was reported to DESI, is that's why we were asked to change them from, from a coordinator to a technical director, was because that is how they were reported to DESI. That was the justification.
Tim Ellis, you want me to help with that?
No, anybody from, from a standpoint of reporting faculty members, staff members to DESI, there's a position code, but that, that technical director title doesn't have anything to do with their position.
Yeah, I think the prior board has told a lot of things they probably shouldn't have been told.
It could be. The summer school thing, here, tell me again what that, what that is.
You currently have a position that's in place that, that basically glorified administrative assistant, almost.
For the summer school.
For the summer school program, okay? What, what needs to have happened? You just address that annually, and you, you look at a hire at that point in time. It could be a administrative intern, it could be a teacher.
Yes, I think that's how it used to be done.
It could be somebody that could really, that is interested, maybe wanting to earn some extra money and oversee summer school, along with the elementary and secondary directors and building principals.
Sure. So this, this position right now is just one person who, that's all they spend their time on is summer school?
No.
There's other duties there.
No.
And we're looking to make some reassignments there.
Okay, all right.
They do three or four other things.
To, to fill whatever attrition needs we got or other areas we got.
All right. All right.
So that position is not necessarily being?
Don't lose her.
You're, you're taking this amount, there's other openings, other available needs, and we're shifting it. Is there a reduction here? Yes, there will be of dollars.
Right.
The person itself is not losing its job.
All right, thank you.
Are they losing, go back to like what Chris just said about the coordinator. He used coordinator of council, director of council. And you said that person would go back to do what, so to speak?
The counselor position? It just, yes, you're, they're currently called tech directors. I'm just eliminating.
It's a title change.
It's a title change.
It's a title change only to bring consistency.
Pay and everything.
So you're going to look at the salaries on the two?
We, I will, we'll reevaluate the salaries on the two new adds.
Please do.
But we need to get these opened up for applications and so we can move forward with.
Can I ask? Oh, okay. I'm going to ask this because I couldn't find it. So the coordinator of counseling, according to your organizational structure, falls under assessment as opposed to student services?
I've talked with?
Since that's really what they do is student services?
I've talked with both Solan and Kendra Gardens, as well as Kim Hill. Really, it's from a responsibility standpoint that's occurring right now in the director of student services and also what we believe right now is needed, particularly in the APR. Help me here, Kendra.
College of Career Readiness.
Yeah, College of Career Readiness.
That's just one piece there.
That's just one piece?
It is, it's a step back. DESI would not?
We're not, we're not looking at it.
To put them back into testing.
We're not looking to fully take on the testing role, okay? The other piece to this is proximity, okay? Where that person now is being housed out of maintenance and ultimately trying to get them in the same location with the other directors and reporting to Kendra from an evaluation standpoint.
What's that location? Where are you trying to get them?
If we make the move to NOYS, okay, with PAT, uh, early child, special education, preschool, your Keatley Center area becomes available. PAT is vacated Keatley Center, okay? You currently still need Keatley Center just from the gym use because of Truman Middle School. We would potentially look to house guidance counseling and take her out of maintenance building to a location that's better suited to do things. Potentially look at moving assessment over there too.
Well, the director of counseling is not just counselors, it's also social workers. I mean, I understand with?
Student services?
I understand your question, Chris, where counseling is really, truly the movement and the recommendations coming from DESI is, is?
Student services.
Student services. It's counseling kits, okay?
It's bullying, it's suicide. I mean, it's, it's those?
When you, when you look at the director of student services and what you're asking that director of student services to do, the responsibility?
I see that. I totally, but that is a crappy reason to not put it there.
I've really looked into a report.
I know, but?
I'm not looking to change the job requirements that they're currently doing.
It just?
From the college of career readiness piece, it makes very much sense.
Okay, that's?
Right.
One piece out of, I mean?
The whole picture.
Yes.
I've had this discussion with Kim and Kendra. They're, they're in agreement from a proximity standpoint and evaluation standpoint. The kicker is, when you look at this, are they assuming assessment? No, they're not. That hasn't, that hasn't changed.
So then, why aren't you putting them under student services?
I agree.
So why aren't they under student services?
We can, we can do that and still bring them into the Keatley Center.
Right. I mean, that coordinator of health services, I don't, I just, I get it. The student services, that's big. I see that.
I think what you're hearing, Robert, is that at least several of the board members would like you to take a second look at it.
I'm not saying it's wrong. We're just saying that it fits better under student services. I think that's what Chris and I were trying to say.
I totally agree. And as, as a former council for 27 years, where we worked as a state to move away from testing, I mean, to where we are now doing student services, to me, I see this on paper and I see it as a? Move back. Well, as opening the door to move back.
Camel, camel knows under.
But, but also, Chris, I think you would admit too, especially as a high school counselor, under college career readiness, that you don't fully get away from understanding the assessment piece, particularly of ACT.
Okay, that, that is your high school counselors, elementary, middle. I mean, I, I know, it's just, we have to decide our, district has to decide what do we want our counseling department to be, to do for our students? And then, place that department in that area. That's how I would look at that.
We'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
You agree, Martin? Okay, so can I talk about the reductions, the high school at-risk, adult ed, and?
Currently, basically, I have two people that oversee that.
That's the Webster Building? Well, has been.
Right.
I know we're moving people around, but? So, so this is?
There is a limitation.
It's all one, it's all one job?
Right.
Even though it has three things, it's just one position, two positions currently?
Well, I mean, we're going to, I'm going to go back to the summer school. I think that's a bigger job than what we think it is, so?
Those, those responsibilities, you're looking to absorb with the current people in place, your elementary, secondary director, your building principals help out anyway. They're not getting paid anymore, but you got to help organize it. Then, at the time, you look to hire somebody to physically help oversee it on a daily basis. If you go to 24 summer school days, which we currently have approved under the academic calendar, you're really talking about somebody to oversee it for an additional two weeks, two and a half weeks.
Okay, I'm good with, I'm good with that. So are we going to go ahead and let you advertise for those two positions that you want to add? Are we good with that?
Yeah, that'll be approved.
We have to approve it first, right.
But if, if we, if we start the process, I'm trying to get direction here to?
I'm not good with the salary proposal.
I get that.
Yeah, I, before posting?
The concept makes perfect sense. The salary looks, looks better.
What about for the position that doesn't exist now, the federal programs one?
Somebody who did that.
That's this, that's this job up here. That's what the salary?
That's just changing that.
You're assuming more responsibilities there. That position has a, has a chance to actually help you save dollars and obtain dollars.
The coordinator?
The federal program.
Oh, yeah, that's what we were just saying.
And problems, issues that were currently?
Because we, at one point, had a grant writer. And, you know, when you have that grant writer, somebody, that's their job.
It's to oversee those?
Then, we could be maybe possibly bringing in more revenue for things that we're missing out on.
She was a grant writer, but she wasn't the one coordinating federal programs. That is a much?
Yeah, this isn't necessarily grant writing.
It's two different things.
We have various grants being written by teachers, various people throughout the district that is federal dollars. This would all fall underneath that.
I just, I mean, I'm just saying that there's places, I think that if we had someone and that was their job to do that?
Our income would go up.
I think that our revenue base could increase.
So you're, you're, you're good with this?
That's why we stopped the position, though, because it wasn't cost effective. That's why we did away with it.
If I can recap this, you're good with it, take a look at it, counselor piece and where it would fall?
Please.
And the salary piece of the early childhood coordinator, new position.
Yes, please. Sounds good. Other, those two things.
Okay, can we take a five-minute break here?
A second? We're not doing another term session. We don't have to do that. Yeah.
You have one more please?
Well, I, yeah, five minutes.
Okay, 3.3.1.
What you have here is we put together kind of a staffing plan for the elementary, elementary schools. You have that in?
So that's microscopic.
Even printing it out, I'm like, holy moly. I needed a magnifying glass. But the same with that DESI thing that, like, New York passed out here, I'm like? Really?
Save it, save it, babe.
Save your paper. You got to cut costs.
Okay, okay, you win, you win. Do it landscape, Wes. Thank you. Because it was 21 pages, I stopped.
Okay, so on the first page of the elementary staffing plan, what I did was go through and I met with each of the principals in the area to kind of determine what we believe there means we're going to be going into this next year. And we were looking at it from a perspective of if we kind of maintain the current process that we use to determine the teachers, how would that look? And then, I went back and also put if we wanted to go to the DESI desirable standards, what that would look like. As you can see from the information presented, to go to the DESI desirable standards today, stop. I can tell.
Go, keep going.
We would need 89 additional sections in elementary. Obviously, today, we don't have the means to put in 89 sections in elementary to get every classroom to desirable standards.
It's like three new schools.
Yeah, it's a lot. It's a lot.
Four schools.
And as we look then to the DESI standard piece, that is more doable. Today, we would need an additional 13 sections. Now, we do have a few issues as we look down the list of where those sections would need to be added. You have a column called space needed to the very right. You have space available and space needed. You have four sections here in four different buildings that we would need to make some type of accommodation for, whether it be a trailer or module, to come in to house one of those sections. The rest could be housed, the 13 section could be housed in the current structure that we have today at these, at these schools.
Chris, what would be a cost of a module? Currently, we've got pricing from three different vendors and we hear that the lowest yearly rental at this time would be around three, or $7,000 annually. That's for signing up for three years. Then, the setup and delivery is about another $7,000. And also, about another $10,000 to provide electrical service to the buildings, provided that the school has it available. So you're talking total about $50,000 to $60,000?
For each one we add?
No, for the four modules total. What, what we're saying here is we would need four modules total, okay? To add 13 sections in K6.
$28,000, that's a one-time cost that you never reoccur again, though. The setup cost is a one-time cost. The rest are reoccurring.
13 additional teachers would roughly be about $650,000. But if your goal is to, to continue to move forward, I would like to recommend on the 14th that we come back and we get to, we stop this roller coaster that we've been going through this past year on whether pairs needed, you know, those types of things. Let's start moving towards these standards. That's where our money needs to be spent to get to this base of appropriate classroom sizes.
So this would get to the appropriate classroom size without having the oversized pairs in the classrooms as we do today, this structure.
So have we filled all the pair positions that we?
We still have a few that we're trying, trying to fill, but we've filled most of them.
Filled most of them, okay.
I thought we had pairs that Eugene fielded right now in some of those classes.
Right now, we do. Right now, we do.
It's not, no additional sections are listed for Eugene field.
There would be.
Under the standard. We have, it says space needed. Yes, but now, I guess that must be for like the music room because, see where it says additional sections needed? It says zero.
What we did, what Amy looked at was by building, and you see the breakdown. You want to show that page by, by building on Eugene Field?
I got a question.
It's really small font.
They moved section, okay, so when I look back at field, just so I can answer that question?
Sure, I see it now.
Because they move up, we have one section that could go down and?
Because less kids, I mean?
So we would not need to have?
More kids per teacher available as you get older, that's right. So that one bounces out of that group?
Yes.
I have just a question on the original data. I mean, if you look at the classroom count in Carden Park, we actually have 33 classrooms there. So why does this show that we would need nine additional sections? It shows sections needed 34. We actually have 33 classrooms. We're only using 25 of them.
That's not, that's not space needed. That's sections needed. So in order for us to get to the DESI desirable standards, I need to add nine more sections.
Yeah, but a section of the classroom.
Right. I don't need any more, any more classrooms. That's just talking about sections.
I got it. So how did we, how did that translate, the 89 translate over to? I'm looking at apples and oranges, I think.
Current sections that we have are 25. Sections needed would be 34 for that. So they're showing 25 sections is what we have, not classrooms.
I know, but we have 33 classrooms, so we have the ability to take on 33 sections.
Carden Park and Oak Grove were built to have four sections per?
You're talking about for design?
I haven't got, I'm talking about total, the total classroom count is 33.
Looking at desirable.
You got to net that out for your special stuff, but?
You're looking, if that's the case, what you're looking at is redistricting, Eric.
No, I'm not. I'm just looking at the space utilization.
Because it says space available, there's only three.
Yeah, my question is, is the space available is three. We really have eight available, but how many are used for whatever?
But Lori is right, because when we did Carden Park and Oak Grove, we did four sections. And that's 28. So that would be the 25 plus three would be the 28.
I'm just looking at the count of the classrooms by building. These are the actual counts.
On the space available, that's the space available I took.
That probably is music, art.
I understand, but we had to net that out, show what the?
That's true, that's true.
Chris, Chris, help walk those buildings. So, I'm sorry, what's the question?
No, I think it may net to the same number, but it's kind of invisible here. I mean, we got to start with the total classroom count. See, I got 33. I'm using 25 of them for sections at Carden Park. And I have this much for special ed or whatever, and net it down to a number where we can actually see what, what it is. It's kind of lost in the clouds there.
If we count the music room and the other things that we don't use as actual classrooms, it messes up how many classrooms we think there really are. I think that's why.
Yeah, first of all, look at this.
At Carden Park, don't they open those up and have one in the middle too?
There's flexibility in some of the walls, but there's four sections.
Well, sections and, sections does not necessarily amount to classroom.
But it was built, both of those new schools were built, that you would house four classrooms of each grade level, K through six.
28 sections.
So, that would be, yes.
That's correct.
That is what, that does not include all of the other classrooms.
So then, this is correct. There's only three spaces.
Yes.
My point is, we should net it down. This spreadsheet ought to flow across from total classrooms, no matter what they are. 33 netted down to whatever, to get you to your 28, and then you're using 25 and you got three left. It ought to flow across, so all the data coincides. Because it's confusing, especially if you're doing any kind of evaluation, looking at the?
Well, and you remember, it's not just us that look at it. The whole public gets to see it, and the more clear it is, the better.
You shouldn't change what you're doing here. I agree. We need modular space, no doubt about it.
I don't like these trailers. I remember we took a lot of flack for having trailers in the, in the past.
I, I remember we took a lot of flack for having trailers in the, in the past. We actually took a vote not to have any more trailers as a board.
You know, Dennis, I would, I would, any, any, any school that's trying to progress and move forward and optimize their space, you're going to have that. I mean, I saw it at Blue Springs, I've seen it all over the place. As they're growing and adapting, they put modular space in place until they can provide the appropriate means to, to do things. I, I think having the student teacher ratio is correct is much more important than having, somebody saying, man, that trailer's ugly.
So Robert, in the facilities, the long range plan, what we're looking at, you, you've brought to us a couple of times now doing a 10,000, no, 10,000, a 10 million or a $15 million lease to where we can get a jumpstart on additions to buildings.
That's what we're waiting on, DLDD?
Yes, so, but this would just be a temporary fix.
Correct, correct.
In order, because I hate them, I mean, I really do, I don't think they're so good.
You are correct.
I don't like them, but it's just a little temporary fix, but it's probably, if we can get on that track.
That's what I'm saying, right.
It's not going to take three years to get those additions, but are we going to be locked into a three-year lease with all of these that we're needing?
I think that's something that we need to look at a little bit further with these leasing groups and see if there can be shorter term leases or not.
Okay, because it's not going to take three years to build the additions and then there's going to be not a use for them and I don't want to have to pay for something we're not going to use.
You're probably, depending on when all this comes together on. On the addition plan to, to be able to take care of your space needs, K six, you're 18 to, to 24 months out.
Yeah, so you're, you're getting closer to three years than what you realize. She is right, though, three-year lease is ridiculous, I mean, we should be year to year.
I'm just, I just don't want to waste.
That is, that is the end goal, that is correct.
We're going to keep money in line.
It's a short-term solution with modules.
Can I ask a question with that back to what Laura was talking about with the, the bond money that might be available? Is that, that has to go to the, to the public for a vote?
No.
You have the ability with what LJ Hart presented to you, it's not bond, not bond money, to, to, to basically borrow it under lease purchase options that we could do right now without a board vote, but not a public vote.
So we could get space right away. I know, I just wanted that to be said out loud. I knew what the answer was, I just want it to be said out loud.
Yeah, we, we believe we could do a lease purchase option for neighborhood of 10 to 15 million tops.
And that would just kickstart.
The point is, the point is we need to start to fix the student teacher ratios and this is a temporary.
I agree.
This is a Band-Aid to tell you do it right.
So like I'm saying, I don't like them, but I think if this is just a short-term and they know that that's what, what we're doing, because we have to be upfront with them and let them know that this is just temporary to get us to where we need to be.
We can get the K six desirable standard started, or not desirable, excuse me, K six standard started next year.
Great.
Do we still have a trailer at Lake and Coleman?
There's two at Lake.
Two at Lake. There's one at Coleman and two at Lake.
No, 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 it's not.
So we have trailers around right now.
That we're leasing at this point, the rest of them are people. I think it's a better solution than 26 to 30 kids in a classroom.
We just have to ensure that the safety of the kids moving between classrooms.
Which is what we do with our other trailers too, right.
Where is the data for the middle schools and the high schools?
Right now we've just gone through the elementary schools, we'll be pulling together the information.
See, I think in some cases we have the opposite of some high schools where the student teacher ratios are wacky low.
Yes, that's true.
And when we went through the staffing plan, we went through that, we're putting together so that you can really have a good comparison of how many students are per class. It's a, this is a lot easier to put together than the, the middle and high school information, so we're going to try to put that in an understandable format. Sometimes there's two sections of classes together, it looks like there's two separate classes, but, so that could skew.
We just want to make sure we're making good use of resources there. If we've got high school teachers, they're five people in a class and it's not gifted special ed or ESOL, we really need to take a look at it.
And also that's where you're looking for block scheduling.
It does. I mean, you can kind of see with some, why their test scores are really high because they have really low classes and the other schools have really high. I mean, that's where class size doesn't matter, it just does. Okay, that's good.
That is. Good work. Motion?
Second frame.
Enjoy the 60 degree weather.
Julie?
I hope this was time well spent.
It was excellent.
We'll see when the vote comes.
Yes, yes.
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 Mr. Rutter.
Time very well spent.
Adjourned, sir?
Yes.